If I could please have your attention, I'll call the meeting to order. This is Canton City Council Meeting, November the 20th, 2014. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invitation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for the good crowd that we have here tonight. We ask that you be with all the families in our city. We ask that you be with us as we talk about different issues here and try to come to an agreement that will push our city forward. All these things we pray in your name.
I'd like to welcome all our guests and visitors tonight. We have an especially large group with us tonight, more than usual certainly. And one of the reasons is, in the city of Canton, there's going to be a special event occurring in the next couple of weeks, I think December the 3rd. And it is going to be a supermarket of veterans' benefits. And this is going to occur at the Bluffs, and I'm going to let Mike Robey, who is with the Georgia Department of Veterans Affairs, explain this a little bit later. But it's an opportunity for veterans in our community and around the area to come in and find out what all benefits actually that they may be entitled to. You know, I'm sure there's a lot of veterans that just simply don't know all that is out there to assist them. So I think this is a great event, and we're fortunate that it's being held here in the city of Canton. And we appreciate them. It's been all over other areas of the state, I understand, but never been in this particular area. So we appreciate them being here. In honor of this event, I have a proclamation, and I would like to ask Mr. Robey to come up, and I'll read the proclamation and make the presentation. Whereas men and women who have served in the armed forces of the United States are returning home to Georgia at a rate of approximately 1,000 each month. And whereas it is important for returning veterans to know about the various benefits available to them, particularly in the areas of education, job training, employment, insurance, and hospitalization. And whereas benefits due our nation's veterans of all wars, their dependents and survivors are often administered by various agencies in widely separated locations, making determination of eligibility and the filing of claims sometimes difficult, inconvenient, and time-consuming. And whereas leaders of the federal, state, and local agencies will bring representatives of their organizations to the Cherokee Conference Center at the Bluffs on December the 3rd, 2014, from 10:00 a.m. until 3:00 p.m. to speak with veterans and their families about eligibility of various benefits and, in many instances, file claims. Now therefore, I, Gene, have been mayor of the city of Canton, Georgia, to hereby recognize December the 3rd, 2014, as supermarket of Veterans Benefits Day in Canton, Georgia, and urge all citizens to recognize the efforts being made by officials of the Georgia Department of Veteran Service, the United States Department of Veterans Affairs, and other agencies on behalf of our veterans and their families.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. On behalf of Commissioner Wheeler, who could not be with you, I will be representing him here this evening, along with members of our veteran service board, Mr. Phil Youngblood, who is our vice chairman, Mr. Ed Winnick, who is our secretary, and Mr. Fred Fincher, who is a board member. Also from the Georgia Department of Veteran Service, I have Mr. Harry Evans, who's our North Georgia Regional Director. We also have the manager of our Canton field office, Ms. Rita Barnhart, Mr. George Cannavagio, who's my Director of Claims and Appeals, and other members of our great organization. Council members and Mr. Mayor, we want to thank you, sir, for the opportunity to be here, for the great hospitality you've shown to this department thus far. I'd also like to thank our veterans for being here tonight, service organizations, Miss Lynn, American Legion. Folks, it's an honor. We're excited to be here. Just to give you a quick, brief history on the supermarket, Commissioner Wheeler is the Commissioner of the Georgia Department of Veteran Service. He's in his 65th year as the Commissioner for the state of Georgia. His first supermarket he held was in 1966 at Fort Benning, Georgia. Each year since then, we've had a supermarket. What this does is it invites the public, our veterans, to come to this supermarket and find out what benefits that they may be entitled to. We have various representatives, if you can see here, from social security to small business, the VA, the healthcare, they will be doing some health screening there. They're supposed to bring some flu shots and do some cholesterol checks from the Atlanta VA Medical Center. They're also going to do healthcare enrollment from the Atlanta VA Medical Center. We encourage you, it's open, it's free to the public. We ask that you come and be with us on the 3rd of December. Mayor, again, sir, we can't thank you enough for hosting and the opportunity to be here, sir.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Yes, sir. Thank you, officers. Okay, at this time, we will have a presentation, a lifesaving award to Corporal Stephen Delman. Chief, thank you.
Mayor, councilmember Mr. Cummings, it's always nice to be able to come up and recognize an employee for a significant accomplishment. I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to do this, because you've allowed me to do this on several occasions in the past, and this is obviously very worthy of this special recognition here tonight. We have with us Corporal Stephen Delman. He's assigned to the Uniformed Patrol Division. And on October 21st this year, he was dispatched to a sick person call at the Econ Lodge off Riverstone Boulevard. He arrived and went and proceeded to room 123, where inside the room he found an unresponsive male on the floor. But on the dresser, he also recognized some drug paraphernalia commonly associated with heroin use. And our officers, like many officers here in Cherokee County, have received training in how to administer the drug called Narcan that overcomes the effects of an opiate, which heroin is probably one of the most prevalent issues to deal with when you deal with opiate overdoses. He immediately recognized that this was a drug overdose. He administered 1 cc of Narcan to the unresponsive male and brought him back, to the point where he was able to be treated by paramedics from the Canton Fire Department that responded to the scene. And Stephen really utilized his training, recognized the fact that this was a drug overdose, and actually, in the opinion of myself and the fire chief, saved this individual's life and liked to recognize him here tonight and give him the department's lifesaving award. But I'd like to point out that Corporal Delman has been with the agency since May of 2011. This is his third time he's been recognized for a lifesaving award. In January of 2012, he went into a burning building out in Prominence Point and found, along with a Holly Springs police officer, an unresponsive individual at the front door of the residence. The residence was involved, they got the residence out to safety, he was properly recognized for a lifesaving award. Since I've been here, Stephen was recognized in July of 2013. He and Officer Worley were dispatched to a residence off Aquilian Street, and the individual that they found inside the residence also had a history of overdose and drug usage and was not breathing and did not have a heartbeat. Stephen administered CPR to the individual, got a pulse. The individual stopped breathing, and the pulse rate went away for a gant, and continued to administer CPR and was able to continue that lifesaving efforts until paramedics arrived on the scene. I mean, for an individual to be here three and a half years and to be fortunate enough to be recognized by an agency for the third time says a lot about him and his willingness to put himself above the lives of other individuals out there. I mean, he really does the right thing for the right reasons at the right time. It's a great pleasure, for the third time, that we get to recognize Corporal Stephen Delman. And it says, "This lifesaving award presented to Corporal Stephen Delman for recognizing signs of an opiate overdose and administering a lifesaving dose of Narcan to an unresponsive male. The drug you were trained to administer counters the effect of heroin and ultimately saved this person's life." And on behalf of the entire Canton Police Department and Command Staff especially, I'd like to present you this lifesaving award. And obviously, you already have two of those, so now you're going to need a whole rack, Stephen. Congratulations, and I wish you the best.
Alrighty, and as we move along, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Yes, I'd like to add an executive session at the end of this to look at litigation, current litigation in one case, and a threatened suit in another case. The other thing I'd like to do is remove A.D. under Old Business. Mr. Green spoke at the last meeting and came up with an additional potential option for lighting along Northside Boulevard, and so we're not prepared to proceed until we pursue this additional option. And I'd also like to remove A.E. After discussion with Bobby and other people, I really can proceed with discussion. I don't need council approval to do A.E., so I will proceed to do that.
Any other, Mr. Hoppin?
Yes, I'd like, on the Old Business, have a brief minute to talk about the Protestant light.
Okay, we're going to add that to, add H?
Yes.
Live discussion. Okay, any other corrections or additions to the agenda? If not, do I have a motion that we approve with those changes?
Some.
Have a motion, half second. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Close no. All members voting for the motion. Okay. Also in your agenda package, you have the minutes of the November the 6th council meeting. Are there any changes, corrections to be made to those? If not, entertain a motion to approve those minutes as presented.
Some seconds.
Half second. Okay. All those in favor signify as saying aye.
Aye.
Close no. All members voting for the motion, the exception of Parrish. That's right, you want to put that here. So he has accused himself of that vote. Thank you. I had forgotten that, as a matter of fact. Item 6 is a 10-minute public input period. We have a couple individuals wishing to speak. Thomas Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As each of you may recall, including our Ward 3-elect, Ferrishon, I addressed the council during the work session two weeks prior in regards to the adoption of the school safety zone maps, which is currently pending before the council tonight in the consent agenda. And I would like to ask this council again, I hold in my hand a composite of every school safety zone map in the entire county, including colleges and universities, including Reimark, along with private institutions as well, that I would like to see that this council adopted the maps that are indeed correct. As reflected in the minutes, I expressed reservations, and I watched a video again where even the city attorney, the honorable and respectable Dyer, even mentioned that the school board, at the bequest of the municipal court judge, Judge Roach, who's also the school attorney for the school board, mentioned that there was a few ball fields around the high school there that were in discrepancy with the maps that the school had given me. The adoption of these school safety maps is a very serious public safety issue. They're used for a variety and smorgasbord of law enforcement purposes and prosecutorial purposes, varying from things that I would be concerned about, all the way down to speeding tickets, which can be enhanced because of these school safety zones. It's very important that if this council wishes to move forward at the request of the school board to adopt these maps, that there not be any discrepancies. Now, I don't know for sure as to what exact ball fields that the city attorney had mentioned during the work session, but I know that they would have to be located in Bowling Park, I do believe, and he shook his head yes to that. So there appears to be a discrepancy. I just don't feel comfortable with the city council just saying obligatory yes, in the words of our Ward 3 councilman, Mr. Rust, as he stated two weeks prior, to just obligatory yes to everything that's on the consent agenda. I would ask for my Ward 3 members, Ferrishon and John Rust, and any others here who would have the courage to do so, to vote no on adopting the consent agenda and to give this matter the discussion and the attention that it deserves, if not for the sake of anyone else, and at least for the sake of myself. I'm desirous to follow the laws of the state of Georgia that's provided to me by the legislature, and these maps are a very serious and critical public safety initiative that I wish to follow. I want this matter to be vetted properly, and if there are any discrepancies, no matter how slight, even varying with maybe even as little as an acre, it needs to be, it needs to be done right. And if any discrepancies be found, or if the city attorney's comments are indeed correct, if there are discrepancies, then I would ask that this council vote no, reject the notion of an obligatory yes, and to reprimand this matter to committee, or to sit down with the school board and have this matter ironed out before this council just adopts a map that could be in, that could have discrepancies versus the maps that I've already obtained. Thank you.
Thomas, could you wait one second? Could I? I'm going to ask Bobby a question first. Bobby, is there discrepancies?
Well, I'm not aware of another map, so I don't know that there be a discrepancy. If the map does not include the softball field...
I would contend that's a discrepancy, because I have...
And it has less property perhaps means school or may own.
Right.
This is the map they've asked us to adopt. So if the golf softball field is actually the school board property, it won't be in official map. That's a problem for the school board.
So that means Thomas could be on that property and not be in violation, even though it is school property? Is that correct?
Correct. I'm not aware of, I'm not up against school. What I'm wondering is about, if there's a school function going on in the field, that may be different. But if you're just there and nothing's going on, it's not within your map.
Right. But I don't want to be, I don't want to be subject, I don't mean to interrupt discussion amongst the board, but I certainly don't want to find myself taken into custody and being subject to litigation on the matter where I can lose my freedom. If this matter is going to be adopted, it needs to be adopted correctly before someone loses their freedom. All right?
The question would be, what's correct? The school board has given us a map.
If it's not correct...
You think it's not correct? We need to tell the school board, we don't think this is correct.
Why are we comparing it to?
Well, that's the business, man. I talked, I talked to Mr. Weaver privately. He's got a book there, and I asked Mr. Weaver, "If you know where the discrepancy is, put it forward, put it out here so we can see it. Show us."
I can show you now.
And then we'll get it taken care of. Either we'll say it's, you're right, or you're wrong.
Would you like to see it?
It wouldn't make any difference what I think. I'm going to, I would want the school board to look at it.
Well, I certainly can't, I certainly can't force the school board to do so, but I think the city would be in a better position, seeing as how the school board impressed the city.
Could you mark the spots and maybe put a short note on there and turn it over to
Absolutely.
My city clerk, and we'll get it, get the school board to look at it?
Absolutely.
The school board attorney, when he and I talked, said, "If you don't want to adopt this Cherokee High School map until we've sorted it out, fine. You can adopt all the other maps. The only issue is the Cherokee High School one. There's no deadline. If you want to put it all off and talk some more, that's fine too. They just asked us to do it."
And I respectfully ask council, as many members here may be aware, I know that the mayor certainly is, he was with us for many years. I've taken this matter very seriously. I've worked closely with the city to have numerous ordinances on the city books repealed or replaced to follow through the law. I certainly don't want to become the test case where I can lose my freedom. This is literally a matter of public safety, for not just myself, but for other members in the public as well. If there's a discrepancy, please vote no.
If you adopt the map, that provides the boundaries for the school zone. There is no discrepancy. Somebody that's within those boundaries is in the school zone. Somebody that's outside those boundaries is not in the school zone.
What exactly does a school zone mean? What does that limit?
You can't have a weapon on the school zone.
Is that, is that the only thing?
That's right.
It's in or on property, but the problem is, is if a ball field in one map is in property and the other map is all property...
No, no, we are adopting the map. If a ball field's not in there, it's not in there.
I agree, but I...
There is no other map. This is, that's why the law says we have to adopt it to avoid this very situation where there's other maps out there. If we adopt it and the school board doesn't like it, they'll bring another map to us.
I agree with what the city attorney has said, but I've sat down and I've had a discussion with the solicitor, Jessica Moss, and she's insinuated to me that if there is a discrepancy, I could be on the losing end before the state court judge. And so I don't certainly want to become the test case.
Let me ask a question. Is there a discrepancy between what the school board gave to us and what you have?
I have a copy of the maps that you have in hand in front of you now.
You don't have no discrepancy?
I have, I have a copy here in my hand. I don't know if they match or not, but based on what his comments were, if there's a discrepancy, I would like to see them ironed out.
Why would they be? Where did you get yours?
I got these from the school board, but...
Where did we get ours? From the school board.
Well, the problem is... Is the ball fields. That's the problem, based on his remarks.
Then that's the school board's problem. They tell us.
I agree, and I'm telling...
You need to go see the school board.
I've already done. They're telling me to see you. There you go.
Could we adopt all but the high school?
Yes.
We could do that. And then let's go back and make sure we got it done right on the high school. Would that be acceptable?
That's fine. Whatever, I have to follow whatever this council...
So could we break this out of the consent agreement and just talk about it individually, then we'll vote on it as a little change, that we're going to exclude the high school?
Either we could do that, or we could just wait and do it all at one time?
Well, whatever's easiest.
If there's still pressure, do it.
Well, whatever's easiest. Do I wait to handle the whole thing?
That's what I suggest. I didn't mean to anger anyone. You're saying you don't anger me? Okay, all right. Thank you, officer. Thank you, officer. Mary Akers?
Yes.
As most of you know, Mary is the Director of the Cherokee Arts Council of...
Yeah. Well, I come before you tonight to express my gratitude. Mayor Hobgood, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Dyer, members of the city council, it's a privilege to stand before you and tell you that I'm the Director of the Cultural Arts Center for Canton, Georgia, for Cherokee County. We are so grateful for the financial allocations you have given us. We are going to put them to very good use. We're going to be a good steward. We want to tell you that we are one of the largest art centers in North Georgia. We host the theater, we host the visual arts, we host an educational program, and it's great to have all this under one roof, and it's a privilege. We want to talk, I want to talk to you tonight about some of the activities and programs that we have. We welcome the Cherokee Board of Education, which brought us over 2,500 people last year as guests. Our gallery, the gallery openings that we have once a month on First Friday brought us over 800 people last year. Our theater welcomed 1,300 people. Our community outreach programs, such as Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Adults with Disabilities, brought us 1,500 in participation. A thousand people were touched by our classes last year. It's amazing. Canton Festival of the Arts on a good weekend... Canton Festival of the Arts, on a good weekend, brings at least 10 to 15,000 people. And we're just beginning. We're just beginning. This is a positive impact to the community. We could not do this without your support. And so with that, again, I offer my great gratitude. We brought close to 20,000 people to Canton last year, and again, we're grown. It's amazing to see the support on a community level that we have, and I want to thank you for it, because I have worked in other communities and have not seen such support. So I'm going to not take up too much of your time, but I'm going to give you a little story, and this is a true story. We started our young theater program in September. These are eight, five to eight-year-olds. And we made a class the first month, and Mr. Chris came, and they had a good time, and they enjoyed it. And we didn't have anybody register for the second month. So we talked, called Mr. Chris and told him not to come. Well, at 4:30 on Tuesday night, when the class was supposed to come, these parents and children come bounding through my doors, and there's no Mr. Chris. Mr. Chris is the teacher. And I explained to one parent, who is also a grandmother and brought friends, she has five little children with her, I said, we had to cancel the class. And she looks at me, and tears came to her eyes. She said, Ms. Mary, you can't cancel the class. And I said, well, we didn't know you were coming. She said, you don't understand. Mr. Chris is the most positive male role model that these children have. And I looked at the other parents, and many of them were single parents, and they agreed. I didn't have enough students to actually pay Mr. Chris to come up from Alpharetta. And I thought, well, I'll go down to the office and call Mr. Chris. I called Chris, and I said, if you will come, I will find a way to pay you. And he said, I'll be there in 30 minutes. He walked through the door, and these children ran to him. They had drawn him pictures. They hugged him. They kissed him. You can't do this in the school system. And he gave them a class. And so Mr. Ingram presented me with your check the next two days. Two days later, and I want to tell you, we can keep Mr. Chris, and we can keep Ms. Terry, and we can keep Ms. Linda, and we can keep Mr. Bob and Mr. John. And I want you all to know how much you have made a difference in the lives of these children. They will never know what the city of Canton has done for them, but I do, and I thank you for the bottom of my heart. So don't be a frustrated. Come to Cherokee Arts Center. We have a holiday show in Salem. We have the North Georgia Art Rambles on December 6th and 7th, and we have a Bluegrass Christmas Musical on December 13th. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. So we have a public input period. We have a consent agenda, and I suspect that, let's see, where does that one on there?
Under D. D-17D.
Okay. Approval resolution to adopt school safety zone. We'll go ahead and pull that off for now, and we will see what the pleasure of the council is after we deal with the consent agenda.
May I ask you a question?
Sure.
By removing it now, does that indicate we have no school safety zones at all?
No. It's a question of proof in a prosecution. When we adopt the map, it is the prime and basic evidence of what the school zone was. So they could still prove the school zone. It's just...
Okay. Well, listen, I'm just pulling it off of the consent agenda.
They need to...
Counsel what to do with it at that point.
Bobby, only describe why it's so important we get it right.
What's that?
Can you only describe how important it is that we get it right?
Yeah, it is.
If it's the evidence for prosecution, that's what it's used for.
Right. Is there any other items on there? Let me just read them, and if any of these need to be removed, for further discussion, we will do so. Item A, approval of budget amendment to utilize excess insurance premium tax funding for unfunding of light reduction. Item B, approval of $2 reduction of residential waste removal fees, which does not include the senior fees. Item C, approval of, to waive the administrative variance fee for Oakdale Baptist Church that we discussed at the last meeting. Item E, item D is removed. Item E, approval of planning commission recommendation, KZ 1409-001J, Henry requesting to rezone 2.52 acres located on West Lakeview Drive, O and I to RA6, a residential attached six years per acre. Are there any others? Mr. Young?
I just wanted to, just in the interest of full disclosure, mention that my wife's parents and sister and brother-in-law are members of Oakdale Baptist Church. So I just wanted everybody to hear that.
Okay. I don't think item like, I don't think item for the end vote. But thank you, thank you.
My apologies.
Okay.[958.56][958.56](laughing)
I got the business comment.
And I went to Oakdale Elementary School, too, you know?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda A, B, C, and E.
Okay, we have to vote, you have a second. Have a second. All those in favor signify the saying aye. All opposed, no. All members voted for the motion. All right, item D, adopt the school safety zone pursuant to House Bill 826. What is the delay?
Can I say one thing? Just clarify my comments. The part I disagree with Mr. Weaver on is, I don't think it puts him in any jeopardy. We will be establishing the boundary. That boundary may have to be changed later to add additional property, but the boundary is being established by your action. There is no question about where the boundary is. That was my only point. If you choose to put it off, I'm, I'm in trouble with that. But that was what I was disagreeing with. I don't think it makes it any, it makes it clearer, not less clear, when you adopt that. Mr. Rust?
I disagree with you, Bobby, a little bit, because if we have one issue, and that's a ball field on the high school, and Mr. Weaver is carrying a weapon through a part of that ball field that's excluded from our map, he's cleared, and a safety officer at the high school or whatever calls up the police and says they want him arrested, what do you think's going to happen to Mr. Weaver?
Well, presumably Mr. Weaver would say, well, there's your map, and I was outside that boundary.
As he's in jail.
You know, that's a different question, and I don't have any disagreement with that. If you're, and I don't care if you postpone it. And that's my only point. We are establishing...
You already have, if that's the point, we're postponing it. Ask them to redraw. Ask the high school to redraw.
And what if they bring us the same map? I mean, if they say that's what we own, that's our property...
Then they don't own the ball field then, is that...
That's the question.
Okay.
They may not own the ball field.
That's a question they have to answer.
Correct. But right now, according to whatever map they use, they don't own it.
Bobby, it doesn't make a difference to delay a little bit. Try to clarify it.
Prosecution's in the meantime, yes.
Should we move this to the...
We just postpone it indefinitely.
Well, postpone indefinitely. Or we could move to the work session in December, first work session in December.
I think with the holidays, you're not going to have any more information by then. We can try, but...
Well, we try that. Anybody have an objection to that?
I'd say a comment.
Yes.
That was really not a school ball field until 10 years ago or so. I actually helped build it.
Yeah, no, it's the new one, not that one. That one's clearly out.
Not the one in the end?
No, it's the new one they built that's beside the baseball field.
The long one, I thought you were talking about the softball field at the end. But it was core property, refused to be, and they had a new ball field. We actually made it into a ball field. Fair enough.
And apparently the movement is on core property as well. So that's, that's the issue. Their boundary may not include that ball field.
Mr. Rust?
I'm just going to ask Mr. Weaver to just stay away from the high school until we get this done, please.
No problem. No problem.
Thank you. I don't want to solve it for a while.
Mr. Grub?
I would feel comfortable approving the map for the elementary and middle schools at this point, for sake of litigation, and wait until we get more information on the high school.
Anyone else? Are you making that a form of a motion?
Okay.[1189.98][1189.98](laughing)
Can we change that a little bit, Sandy, and just say all but the high school? Because I don't know what else there might be. If there's another school in there or not?
There's only one school in question.
There's six others.
Six high schools.
So we want to cover everything but...
One in question, though?
Only one question. Six others.
So we just, everything but the high school, that would make sense.
Everything except Cherokee High School. Make a motion, we approve the map given to us by the school board, excluding the high school.
Okay, we have a second.
I'll second it.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. All members voted for the motion. Okay. All right. Next up, discussion to consider a Christmas parade as a city-sponsored event managed by the Optimist Club, thereby assessing no charges for the state and sound system. Mr. Grub?
I'll just play a comment first, I don't want to make a motion, but we spoke about this last time. Optimus Club was asked to do the Christmas parade some 27 years ago, I think, if I remember right. And they've done that every year for the city. It's very well attended. It's always been a great event. I think some of my children, through the years now, they have a little one, I'm right there again. It's always done right, and these business people do it for the right reasons. They give the money to bring good causes. So I would like to see, I'd like to make a motion that we make this a sponsored event of the city and that we not charge for the sound system or the stage.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion?
Yes. The only thing I would like, they go through the formality of signing the paperwork. We waived the, as you requested, but they know that they're responsible for the care of the both the stage and the sound system.
I had suggested, Mr. Cummings, maybe any time we have a situation like this in which we declare it to be a city-sponsored event when there's a private nonprofit or whatever involved, is that we have just a simple agreement that just says sort of what you suggested there, but that they are conducting that event on behalf of the city. In other words, we are asking them to conduct that event. To me, that gives the more concrete evidence that they are city-sponsored if we ask them. It's almost like you have a contract or agreement with them to do that. And it could include what you're saying there, is that either they're responsible or whatever for any city equipment that they may be using. I don't know.
Mr. Rust, go ahead.
I'd just like to add that we should add to the agreement that for the next 27 years, they promise not to charge us to do this for them, for them to do this for us, because they're really providing us a service, and we appreciate that.
Mr. Grant?
I actually think having the city, having some form of agreement, having the city decide what we would like to request, what events or city events would be a good policy to set, because we have had other nonprofit organizations request the stage that have been, you know, denied, you know, waiving the usage of Canton Festival of the Arts, which I think the city does sponsor Canton Tourism, and so I have no problem with, you know, Optimist Club, the Christmas Parade is, you know, a great event and downtown event, but I think we just do need to set up some policies to make sure that we're not, you know, that we're treating everyone equally in this situation.
Mr. Cummings?
Yes. The reason the wording on this is to make it a city event is so that we're not really changing the policy. And what would be established by your voting on this is that any event that came to us would have to be approved by council to be a city event in order to have the fees waived so, or not charged, because city functions don't pay any fees. This way, we're not, by doing it this way, we're not modifying policy, but we're giving the discretion to council to determine which events are city-sponsored and which events are not city-sponsored. I don't know if you can write a policy saying that'll, you know, cover every event as to whether or not it qualifies. Maybe you can't. I don't know.
Mr. Rust?
I think we're just changing the identity and character of the event. It's becoming a city event.
Exactly right.
And I think it's an unusual situation, because how many others are out there that have been serving the city for 27 years? So I doubt very much if we're ever going to see another one like this. And trying to write a policy about when we will ever entertain changing the nature and character of an event to make it a city event is probably difficult. So one-on-one, if we have to address these, it might be the best way to do it. Creating a policy will be very difficult.
Okay. Go ahead.
I think what you're doing is, you're not, you're not authorizing the organization, you're authorizing the event. And if, just for an example, if the Optimist Club came and said, well, we want to have another event, we could very easily say to them, you've got to pay in this case, because this is not a city event.
I totally agree. I just think there may be a couple more that may qualify the same designation, so...
Okay. We have a motion in a second, I believe, on the table there. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify.
Does the motion include, the motion that...
Did it include?
Yeah. It did not include that agreement.
It did not.
No. If Mr. Grub would like to add that.
Oh.
Or if Mr. Grub would like to add that motion.
Sorry.
That's the only thing you got to consider.
It's Christmas, yeah.
It's coming up pretty quick.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'd like to add to that, to the agreement that we would have them, I guess, sign off.
We don't have time for the agreement. We don't have time for the agreement. To be approved by council.
Just explain to them, we're expecting that they take care of it.
We're just going to go back to the same motion, I guess.
We didn't amend the motion, okay. Those in favor signify the saying aye. Opposed, no. All members voting for the motion. I do think in the future it would be good to have a written standard little agreement of some kind, with...
Didn't we, we came up with one, I thought. We talked about all this before, but...
Yeah.
I didn't remember we had an actual contract.
We never agreed on what I was supposed to say.
I think that's wrong. Okay. Item B, action on waste management revised contract. Mr. Cummings?
Yes. At the last meeting, we had some ambiguity in the renewal and who could renew and, who could automatically renew and what the price would be, and there was some conflict. And we've rewritten paragraph three, which gives us the sole option to control renewal, and it also specifies the price increase on renewal periods to being related to the consumer price index. So that's the change that you requested, and it's in the contract to go forward.
Grant?
A question on that. So the city must notify the contractor by June 30th of the year. Was that also changed? I don't recall that being in the contract or anything.
It was added, and that was purely arbitrary. I picked that day.
Because that seemed really, really early to-
Well, my thinking was you would be, you would know you wanted to put it out to bid or whatever by then.
Mr., if I might also answer that, uh, the, typically would be ninety days. The problem that exists is this actually places the responsibility on the city manager to by a certain time come to council. If he or council recommends a change in vendors or non-renewal. If you don't put a date in here, the problem that can occur is that you extend past the timeframe in which it's feasible to do an RFP and get a replacement vendor. And we could run to the end of September with the current vendor, very angry at us because we're throwing them out. And the council had not made a decision, we could end up with a vendor saying services ended. We could end up with a situation saying, the vendor saying, uh, I'll extend it, but since I have no contract, the price is double. So, this forces us to, by putting that ninety days in there, it forces the city manager's position or management position to come to council with any change before June thirtieth so that change could be effectuated seamlessly.
There's nothing here, uh, would there be, that would prevent us from, uh, beating it out in March?
No.
And, uh, okay, that, that's something that I, I think we, you don't want to wait and come to the council in, uh, late April or early May and say, you know, maybe we ought to beat this out, see where we are. Because it'd be too late then, because you couldn't give them, uh, give them adequate notice, you see. But, uh, there's nothing that would prevent that, so.
No, it's just the deadline, you could tell them in January that you're not renewing.
Right, but I mean, you can even-
Or make your determination by bidding first.
Right, it puts them in a little more difficult situation there if you bid it in March, because everybody else, well, they would know what they were paying anyway, it's a public credit, you know, so.
I guess not, all right. Anyone else have a question or anything? Do I have a motion? Motion to approve. I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify and saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Okay, item C, discussion and authorization from city manager to create a position of Parks and Rec director. Mr. Huffman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, this is something that we've discussed before briefly, but I want to move it forward and make it a little more formal and, and, uh, hopefully we'll give the direction to our city manager to go ahead and, um, establish a, a, um, job description for this director. I've got some of other locations of what, uh, that would entail. But basically, I've had a couple more meetings since our last, uh, meeting here. Uh, one just yesterday with, uh, Mr. Cooper of the, of the county and talking about how to get started with our park, our new park. And he just said that the fact that we are going to maintain it for the first year, that, that, to go ahead and have them schedule, um, team sports in there in the spring and fall. He said that that wouldn't be an issue, that they thought that he could do that without much trouble at all. Uh, I still would have to work on the concession, I'm not sure that that would fit in under that. But, with that said, I want to go ahead and, and get a director for that, because we have twelve parks. Right now, we've got a few handshake deals on some of the parks. And we take, I don't believe we take any revenue in from any of the parks. And where we have team sports that, uh, that are using these fields and we have to maintain them, we ought to be taking some, some revenues in. Uh, a while back, we adopted and approved the, the policy manual of the county as, uh, as our policy manual to get started. Doesn't mean we have to live by it, we can change it as we see fit in the future, but it's a, they've done a lot of work on it, it's, it's well done. And it has some costing in there that we can use. We have the authority to go up or down it if we see the cost difference. But we're going to need to phase in the Bowlin Park, the Harlan Parks and, and these other parks that, um, that, that people want to use for, uh, private, private events. So to do that, we need a park director to organize that, particularly when we start talking about team sports. And you've got to do, uh, clear, clearing and make sure that the coaches are clear, they don't have any criminal records or of that nature, they've got to check the kids. Uh, and there's so much that goes on in order to protect our city from potential lawsuits. So, uh, with that, I would like to recommend or put into the motion that we ask, um, Mr. Cummings to start looking into the director's position.
You have a second. Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion, questions, comments? Uh, Mr. Grant?
When are we talking about, uh, your motion? Does that be adding in, in this year, in the 2015 budget?
Yes, it would be in the budget, probably halfway through the fiscal year. Uh, if, if we find the right person, we probably want to take him immediately, but, uh, or her. And, uh, but for functionality, probably don't need to be around until, uh, spring.
And where would the funds come from?
We'd have to do a budget amendment contingency.
Mr. Russ, do you have a question?
Well, I was just wondering, you know, you ran us by this Jerry Cooper thought for scheduling something for the Etowah Park. What, what do you, what do you mean by that? I'm trying to understand what.
Well, they, of course, they got their parks and they already have a relationship with all the various organizations that have team sports, soccer, lacrosse, football. And they're looking for practice time, field time, and then you can throw in their special events where you might have tournaments that want to use the fields. Uh, he has the process set up to where he can, um, get the play, the teams playing on our fields, because many of them are Canton kids. And they go down south of the Camp, of the city to play their team sports, where many of them should probably be playing up here, it'd be more convenient, uh, because they are Canton kids. So, uh, for him to schedule and get them in, in here, he does this, he does this every fall, every spring with, with any sport. Because some teams add teams, some have fewer teams, depending on how the kids, but I think he said there's something like twenty-five hundred kids, uh, in their program. And, oh, maybe that's the why they have it, and that's another one, the why we'll be looking for, uh, field time as well.
Would the, would the events that the county scheduled be revenue generating typically?
We will, uh, on field sports where they are leasing the field, yes, every, every team will start paying a field. And I think for, uh, I'm trying to go on memory on this, John, it's something like for, to rent for a day or something like that for a mini small kids' field, it's a hundred and thirty-four dollars a day, which is not a lot of money. But when you've got potential of having six fields that you can rent, uh, you know, it, it helps the cost of maintaining those fields.
Yeah, we're going to pay eighty-four thousand, it might make a little dent.
Yeah, it will.
Are we going to collect the revenues or would the county collect the revenues? How would we share the revenues?
Well, I-
I don't want to make things complicated, but-
I agree, and Jerry was very gracious about that. In that I went in to discuss with him with the idea that he's going to want some money to do it. But I approached him the fact that we have signed an eighty-four thousand dollar contract in order to maintain the field, which is pretty good commitment. And, and he said for, uh, Brian Reynolds to just schedule the teams in there where he, he might be sending them to a field outside of the city, he'll just put them inside the city on, on our, in our park. Which is just a matter of paperwork. And so he just said, this, this is not a lot of costing, but he, he wants to help us get started. And he is the one along with Brian Reynolds, he said, the number of parks you guys got, he said, you've got twice the parks that Woodstock have. He said, you need, you need a director.
So you don't anticipate a county city meeting to work out the details?
I'm sorry?
No, it's a joke about power services, we shouldn't have to go to an extensive-
We, we do have a motion on the table there, uh, and, uh, I believe we have a motion and, and a second. Mr. Grant?
I don't disagree with, with the concept of, that there's a need there. I guess my question is just, uh, you know, the budget, where, where the money comes from, I understand it would come from the contingency, I believe, when we discussed this in our, our retreat. I think we had talked about the two thousand sixteen budget of losing director. I just wondered if we were talking about maybe doing this, you know, halfway through the year, if, if this is something that might be better done, uh, as part of the two thousand sixteen budget, just to give us time to plan for it better or?
Well, um-
And budget for it accordingly or?
Uh, we won't have a problem budget-wise. Uh, it, to get into it in the middle of the, of the, of their seasons, in the spring, summer, fall of the, of the biggest part of their seasons. It's probably not too fair to the person we'd be bringing on to get in it at that time. I'd say it can't be done, yes, it, that could be done. Uh, I will say this, though, um, what the county has done, essentially, uh, just a little sidebar here. They've got it down to, they know exactly how much every citizen, a taxpaying citizen pays towards the parks, county parks. Five dollars and fifty cents, fifty-five cents, excuse me. That's how much in the taxes they take from a citizen in the county to operate their, their parks, five dollars and fifty-five cents. Pretty good bargain. What they do do, they have found a desig, some designated revenue streams that they designated to go in to help fund the parks. And one is they take a percentage of alcohol tax that goes towards parks. I know one that we could probably tap, that Mr. Mayor would love to do, and that is the, the, uh, car rental tax. That's me, it's a joke.
Probably don't get enough of that. I've said that three times already, I think.
But that's what, that's how they do do that. They, they take a couple of, um, tax funds or, and they designate, and it comes from there, and then they have user fees, and that pays their four point three million dollar budget.
I think we might be looking at this upside down. I, I've got to tell you, at the Savannah meeting that we went to, I was very, very impressed with a gentleman from Dalton, your hometown, uh, who was the director of Parks and Recs. And the revenues that they generated from their Parks and Recs, just to the programs they have. So we got, we can't look at this as a, maybe priming the pump to get it started, but after we get going, we have to look at a net revenue generator as, as our park system. So I, I, I don't want to look at it as an expense, we've got to look at someone that's going to create revenues for us. And contacting that person, I can probably find his name from that presentation, which is really excellent, I mean, just stopped you in your tracks as to how much money could be generated from Parks and Recs.
Thanks, John, that is, uh, I, I did overlook that, it's what, what it can do for us in the future rather than just the present, which would be in the next, say, eighteen, twenty-four months. But you're absolutely correct. And, uh, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Cooper bring that out, is that, uh, what the county has done with their parks is generate an enormous amount of economic driver in their, in our county. And we could do this with our city, that it will be part of our economic driving forces to bring people in for these tournaments. I mean, I went to one in Gwinnett, and I promise you, they, they had over twenty fields in that park. And they played Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and Sunday. And now I doubt if there was less than twenty thousand people in that park the entire time. The revenue that generate, I don't know, but it had to be enormous, enormous. So it, uh, thanks, John, that is, that, that can be a big revenue driver as we start to want to develop the riverfront down here. Person in the parks could be a big asset in helping us to do that. That would be coming something for later. As I think about an individual for that position, I think about a person that has the wherewithal, that they can go forward and do those type of things rather than just be a park director.
I think the first, first step that would, would, that should be done is that we need to ask our city manager to make sure they develop a, an appropriate job description. That's the first thing I think we have to do. And, and I would, I would, well, I'm sure there's many counties that scattered out there, that's good one, that's good one. But I, another thing that, uh, I think we need to be very, very cautious about is that we, we need an individual when it comes hiring time that has some extensive experience. I mean, I think we really got to have that, some, a good rec director. I mean, you know, we could, we could hire anybody off the street out there to do it, that wouldn't, you know, wouldn't be what we want. But we, it's going to have to be somebody who can take this thing in its infancy and, and build on it, because it's going to be a very beginning and it will be growing here, you know. And, uh, and, uh, obviously, the, the, the need is going to be growing fairly rapidly, so.
Things you have to think about is somebody running a brand-new business, thank you.
Oh, absolutely, I think I've got to have some experience. Mr. Grant?
I, I totally concur, and, again, I think it comes back to not just, you know, making a budget amendment and hiring someone for this position. It's, it's making sure that we have a plan in place and hiring the person who can, can, can strategically implement that plan or the person that has experience in creating those plans that will only be a great parks direct, direct, uh, director, but can also turn this into an economic, uh-
Right.
Development opportunity for the city.
Mr. Mayor, you might remember, were you in office in two thousand? No, in any office in that. I've got a study, I don't know how much it cost the city, it was done in the year two thousand, so you might ask. About that thick. And it's got a lot of renderings of what that car should, could look like. Uh, whatever we paid, we, we paid a lot of money for it, and it's got a lot of cost, estimated costs and things in there. And sure enough, it was built, done in year two thousand, so we're a few years beyond that. But, uh, it's amazing, uh, our new park fits right into what they had scheduled. And that is a start. It is a start. Uh, it shows the path going all the way down to Bowlin and, you know, all that is in there. So it, it's a, it's a starting place.
Good. Okay, we have, we have a motion and a second on that one.
We've got an ending place right here, we've got an ending place right here.
Do we have a, just so we know what we're talking about as far as a budget amendment, do we have a idea or a ballpark for customarily a job like that?
I do, I do. And my guess is going to be between fifty-five and sixty-five.
Any other questions?
I, I think ultimately, if you find the right person and they have a history of generating tremendous revenues in a situation like ours and you have to pay a little more, you might consider that, uh, that's important. But it's a good study.
I think that's something we'll, we'll get to, hopefully, in a long time.
See, while we're trying to get started.
Okay, anything else? If not, those in favor signify, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Okay, let's see here. Next item is item F, uh, the update on the signage for Old Ball Ground Highway, Councilman Goodman and Grant. Who, who's going to go with that one? Go ahead.
We actually met with, uh, a person who wanted to move into that building up there and, um, and talked to him about, uh, what his wants and needs were. He, um, kind of let it be known to us that he'd like to have, if possible, a higher size. And also, the guy next door with S and H tires would like to have his raised ten feet so he could get more visibility from up on Riverstone Park. Uh, Chris, who had to, the repairman, um, has it signed as well, uh, but then he didn't think you could see it as well. We, we talked, we talked about, he, he was, his idea was to try to put the sign up on the roof, which we were, we, we didn't say anything yes or no, we just were bringing that back. But Bill and I met with, uh, Kim Patton and discussed several things today, I'm going to say it. And, uh, I think we came to maybe a better, uh, solution, at least, to start with. And, uh, I'll just mention part of it, and you can mention the other part, is that there are some volunteer pine trees that are growing on that, that bank going down through there, not ones that have been planted. That are lacking some of the vision of that sign. So we're talking about possibly taking those away. And Bill, you want to fill me in on the rest of that?
Yeah, that was, uh, that was going to be the first, um, step that we would maybe recommend, is maybe clearing those pines, because it does impede the sight vision between the bottom of the trees that we have planted and the guardrails. We did find out, Mr. Patton actually found out later today that actually that those trees are in the roadway, that it's actually owned by the DOT and not the, the city. So I talked with Mr. Patton right before the meeting, and, and he is actually going to make a call to the DOT to see if we could get approval to, you know, uh, clear those, just see if that'd be a possibility. We actually think that that would, I drove down there again yesterday, uh, that would actually increase the visibility a great deal down to that area. So that is one immediate step that we could take, that I think would help them, you know, a lot. The other option we discussed, we discussed it, uh, you know, time before- The other option we discussed, we discussed it time before, was possibly putting some directional signages along Riverstone in the right way, indicating, you know, signs that were down gray. Again, that right away being DOT would probably prohibit that now. So one other option that had been discussed in the past, that a couple of property owners had indicated that they would be favorable of, is actually putting signs, monuments, or directional signs at the entrances, you know, to Ballgrom highways on both sides. Again, we found out today that even those would be in the Georgia DOT right away, but Mr. Patton believes that possibly that they may be open to considering that option. So when he talks to them about clearing the volunteer pines, he's also gonna inquire about the possibility or interest of being able to discuss that option as well. So I think the first thing we're going to try to pursue is clearing the pine to see what that would, how much that would help, and then assess the situation, that is something we can do without doing anything. The pole signs that are there are, you know, legal non-conforming uses, which really prohibits doing anything with those. And if we, as a council, did anything with those, it would kind of open us up in the city up for, you know, all legal non-conforming signs in the city. So we think that at least clearing that brush from that bank and from that right way would be a great effort, first effort, to help those businesses there. So we want to propose at least trying to pursue that step as the first step, and then reassess the situation from that point.
So we might know the answer to the question to the DOT by sometime next month, or next...
We're hoping, I think Mr. Patton said he was gonna try to contact them, you know, tomorrow, and start trying to contact them tomorrow. So hopefully by then, we can get another report in the December work session, and see if some progress has been made, so.
Sounds good. Mr. Hudson?
Yeah, I drive by there three, four times a day, but I think taking those pine trees down is gonna help a great deal. The only thing I would suggest that we do in talking to the DOT is that we probably need to tell them that we will plant some low-growing something for protection for erosion off that bank.
I think there's already brush and stuff there, if we just take the trees out or something, we could certainly, we'll certainly inquire about that.
But it definitely will increase exposure.
Mr. Russ?
I think the DOT is gonna tell us what we can do, but I can tell you one thing, having just taken down two forty to fifty-foot volunteers in my own yard, letting them grow is not a good option. Eventually, they get so big, the expense of taking them down, when they get to be forty to fifty feet is not small, especially if you got a whole field of them.
That's true. Okay. Thanks for that report. The item G, report on Fire Services Committee meeting with Cherokee County officials, Councilman Grant.
Yes, we had our epic meeting with the county last Thursday at Sideline's Grill. First, I want to start by thanking the council, the mayor, city manager, and Canton Fire Chief for their participation, and the county commissioners, Chairman Aaron, County Manager, County Fire Chiefs, for their participation. I think everyone showed up from the conversation. I think it was constructive. Also, I want to thank Linda Breeden, who was a Canton citizen, who facilitated the discussion, and I think did an excellent job, given the circumstances. I want to thank Sideline's Grill for donating the space upstairs. I think the setting actually contributed to constructive conversation. We did have, I think, around thirty citizens that showed up, so I want to thank them for coming as well. So again, I think it was a constructive conversation. By the end of the conversation, we met from six to eight P.M. We did decide that we would continue to pursue the option of the, to explore the option of the city designing and building the station, and the county possibly operating that station, you know, given whatever the details would be in the file that lots of things are working out. And we also decided at the end of that conversation that, for now, that consolidation would be off the table to make those, make that conversation more constructive on that one station, option for that one station. The Fire Services Committee is meeting tomorrow, kind of just discuss that meeting and discuss, you know, the next steps. There was some talk about, you know, determining some more metrics, or if there were some more measurements that we may need to take the next steps. And we're meeting tomorrow to just discuss that and to follow up as, you know, as quickly as possible to determine the next steps from there, so.
Okay. Thank you. I would really like to thank the Fire Services Committee, and especially Mr. Grant, for putting that together and making that event happen, because anytime you can get two governmental bodies together to talk, at least talk about anything and discuss it in a cooperative way, I think it's really a win for everyone there.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I've got something I want to hand out. It's, could be, the ink is not dry. I've been working on it, and I've had some help in working on it. I am not on the Fire Service Committee, therefore, I would like to present this tonight as a, as an option, that I think that the county will, I think it addresses some of the things that the county was wanting, and I think the city can live with it. I've already talked with Chief Floyd, in fact, he participated with me on this. And basically, what we did, we just took the MOU that the county sent to us, and we thought a great deal about it, and we gave, we got some give in here that the city could give, as well as the county. So I want to put this out in front of everybody. I'd like to read the first part of it, for the audience. The MOU is, General concurs regarding the need for fire protection for the Northwest Canton area, for both the city of Canton, Cherokee County, is intended to initiate discussion as to whether, though, the intergovernmental cooperation, the city and county can best provide fire protection services to the Northwest Canton area at the most economical cost to the taxpayer. That's what the MOU, and that's what we were discussing the other night. So again, I'm taking most of the language from the county's MOU to us. So under the city obligation, the city will design and build the Northwest Canton Fire Station, which is underway now. Estimated completion date and available for occupancy will be about July one next year. The city will operate the Northwest Canton Fire Station. The area covered by the station will be an area agreeable by both parties, which means our city firemen will be going north on one forty to cover some of the Cherokee area, which we presently do. We do a great deal of that. So, and at times, depending on the dispatcher, when the dispatch sends out Station Nine, which is, you have to go by, the county station, they wave to our Canton Fire people as we go up into the county to service their area, plus the city, there's a couple of communities up there on up that are a part of the city. But number three, the city will execute a mutually acceptable automatic aid agreement, and this is something that both the city and county agreed upon, I think, last week at that meeting, is something that probably shouldn't be in there, is something that we, both parties know that we should go ahead and do with or without. But due to the fact that we were following their MOU, I put it, we put it in there. Here's the area that I think the county would like. The city will provide a ladder truck. We have two ladder trucks. So we're gonna provide one of those ladder trucks, we're gonna, you might say, let them have it, at one of the city-operated fire stations to be managed, managed by the county personnel, which many, we don't have in our county, in our city, a trained, full-staffed ladder truck company. It takes ninety, nine firemen to fully staff a ladder truck. The county has that personnel, and they will staff that ladder truck that we give to them, probably at the Northwest, the new station, or in the future, which will probably be transferred if it's not, is to the new hospital station that will probably come in the next two to five years. And lastly, from the city's obligation, the city will execute a fifty-year intergovernmental agreement for the county to operate a city-owned fire station. The agreement will be renewed every five-year minimum renewal period. The city will notify the county at least twenty-four months in advance. This is their verbiage, there's nothing changed there. Under the county's obligation, the county will assign an ambulance squad to be based operational from the Northwest Canton Fire Station, and that's what people in the Northwest have been wanting so much. I think they will go for this. This is an area where there's been concern about having two different operations, EMS group, or ambulance, and fire, reporting two different parties. Fulton County does this every day. They have Fulton County Fire, and they have Grady Ambulance. This is not uncommon. And I've talked to the chief, we understand this, this is something neither of the chiefs really wanted, but they think they can get it done. With going into it, we've got, we just think we can get it done. The county, number two, the county will operate and maintain the ladder truck with a minimum staffing of three firefighters at one of the city-operated fire stations. The ladder company will be trained as a rapid interventional crew. They are already trained. The county will execute a mutually acceptable fifty-year, this is the same as above, agreement to equip and operate an ambulance, no, it's not, I apologize, this is not the same as above. Three, the county will execute and mutually accept fifty-year intergovernmental agreement to equip and operate an ambulance at the Northwest Canton Fire Station, and maintain and operate the ladder truck at one of the city-owned stations. And it'd be their decision whether that ladder truck stays at Northwest, or maybe it'd be more appropriate to go over to the new hospital, where it's gonna be a five to six-story building. So it might be more appropriate for a ladder truck to be over there. The county will provide training for the city of Canton Fire Personnel as requested, consistent with the county training personnel availability. Right now, they have developed a new training station in Holly Springs. For various reasons, and I think they're somewhat political, we get our training from other locations. That shouldn't be. The county will, number five, the county will execute a mutually acceptable automatic aid agreement, that's the same as above, as I talked about. And the last, the county will notify the city of Canton at least twenty-four months prior to any intent to terminate the intergovernmental agreement. This is in response to their MOU. I think it shows flexibility, willingness to work together, as Mr. Grant said when we walked into the meeting, we put our biases aside when we walked in the meeting. I think this does it.
I was, I think this should be discussed in the Fire Service Committee.
I was gonna suggest that this go through the Fire Services Committee at their meeting tomorrow, and they, you know, kind of hash it out there, and maybe get some clarification on some of this. Okay? Thank you, though, for putting the end of that.
Glad to do it. Item H, a black discussion, Mr. Hudson?
Me begin.
Oh, you can make that short, though, I know you can.
I can.
You know I can.
Please.
I will. We had our, previous meetings, we said we were gonna get enforcement, and Mr. Dyer, our city attorney, and other parties together to start the effort of implementing our plans to improve the blight situation. I thought we had all the parts together, in that we've got personnel, we got code, we got funding, but Mr. Dyer informs me that there are two ordinances that we need to adopt before immediately fully functional. Would you please address that for me, Mr. Dyer? And then we're gonna ask the motion that we direct Mr. Dyer to draw those two items up.
Our nuisance ordinance right now provides for having a lien if the city evades the nuisance, but it does not comply with state law. So we'd have to have a new ordinance to implement the state law process for being able to have a lien. So there's that one. The second one would be if you want to adopt that constitutional tax incentive plan, that would have to be an ordinance as well.
And we can use both. So Mr. Dyer indicated at our meeting today that he would just need direction from the council. Does anyone have any objections, asking Mr. Dyer to bring that to the...
Well, with Thanksgiving being the day you have to turn in for getting on the agenda for the work session, that may not work in December, so.
Work session in January?
Yes, certainly by then.
Okay. So he will bring that to...
We don't need a motion then, right?
No. No. Okay. Thank you. City manager's report?
Yes, sir. First item is to recognize Melissa Forster. She's been certified Level Two of the Local Finance Officer Certification Program, and that's the highest level of certification offered by the Carl Vincent Institute of Government for local government employees. Second thing, the IRS requires that council and mayor be employees of the city for tax purposes, so I'm requesting that all of you contact Lori Waters as soon as possible to fill out a W-4, and it will be handled in a payroll basis, starting with January first.
Now, does that mean they will deduct taxes?
I think you can probably tell them not to deduct taxes, that's between you and the IRS.
I still, I still think we, does that mean we'll get paid time and half for holiday pay when we're charred out on holiday? Well, if we're an employee, I don't, we don't think that'll happen to you. Just kidding. I'm just kidding.
I don't know if you can tell them not to take out taxes, but you can raise your deduct, your...
You can raise your exemption.
Exemptions at twenty-seven or whatever you want.
Then just work with the exemptions. You just work with the exemption. You can figure out a way, if that's what you want to do.
I wish you had a way where they would take something out, so you didn't have it at the end of the...
Well, you can do that, too.
Okay.
The last item is, Mayor, you posed several questions to me as to status on the current construction. The first question, has all the dirt been removed? The answer is ninety-five percent complete on the removal of dirt. There's still a big pile in the middle, as you know, we're putting a retaining wall there. That dirt will be mixed with gravel behind the retaining wall, and whatever left will be hauled off the site. The completion date that we're expecting on the retaining wall is around the first week of December. You asked me on the prime's first submission, what was wrong with it. Best way is to give you an analogy, we asked for a pickup truck, they wanted to, since they got state-fixed pricing, I think they came back here with an overkill and provided us an eighteen-wheeler. For example, the electrical on a fifty-four-hundred-square-foot building, they specified a two-thousand-amp service, we only need a four-hundred-amp service. They had conduit running to each outlet to boost up the cost, or thereby boosting the profit. We told them it was unacceptable, the price came in at nine-hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars. This is one of the reasons we went with the state contractor early, is so that we'd have plenty of time to do what I'll explain in a minute. We told them to go back and rework it, because we just didn't need it, it was a total overkill. We told them to go back and rework it because we just didn't need it, it was a total overkill. I think they're used to generating a certain amount of profit out of the job, and the only way they could do it on this particular job was to increase all the things beyond what was required. They did come back with a second bid, and it's the same reason, they did not do all the adjustments. Give you some idea of things they left in. We have a kitchen in every firehouse, but it's pretty much like a residence, the fireman cook an evening dinner or whatever it is. Might be a TV dinner, because I don't know how many of them are good chefs. They put in commercial stoves, a commercial stove. They just overbuilt, but the second bid was eight-fifty-seven, which we did not accept. There's still things in that they didn't remove from the first bid. In the meantime, we have generated an RFP. You asked the question, would the council approve RFPs? That's not a standard method. We usually put the RFPs out and we bring the proposals back to council. So, the answer is no. The proposal will be, has been sent to the, for advertisement in the newspaper. It will be advertised November 21st. Thursday, December 11th is a mandatory pre-bid meeting. Monday, December 22nd is the bid opening. January 8th, we intend to bring it to council for discussion, and January 15th, we're hoping that you'll award a bid. This is a designed to build. The specifications have been put together. A lot of it was drawn out of the discussions with the state contractor and our review of other fire stations as to the requirements. The scope of the work section of the RFP details what the city requires in the building, and it still allows for the fitter to input in in the design and will probably result in the, should result in a more efficient project. Who will actually review any proposals submitted regarding design, layout, adequacy of electrical, plumbing, and HVAC? I have formed a project team. The chief of, the fire chief will be on that team, the fire marshal will be on that team, Ken Patton will be on that team for building, Mark Crosby, who does, is head of our inspections, Bethany, our engineer, and also David Tavian, who is our city engineer, and I will be involved on that project team reviewing all the proposals that come back. And the last question, are we on track for completion in mid-2015? The answer is yes, we are on track. The original date set for us to break ground was the third week of November. We are in the third week of November, and we've almost finished the site preparation, and we'll be letting it sit during the winter months. We did not want to grade or do any of that kind of work, got rain and everything. It will be sitting, and then January, hopefully, we'll be making the decision and starting construction in March with a July 1st ribbon cutting or opening of the station.
Okay.
That's a quick update.
Question I have, the advertiser of RFP, so all, all the proposers able to come in and get a copy of the specifications and all that stuff for us? Okay, so that is available, that we can get.
That is available, yes, sir.
Okay, so they're all going to be proposing on exactly the same thing? Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, thank you. Anything else you got?
That's it.
Okay. Other mayor's report, I want to mention a couple of things. It's my intention to bring for nomination in the work session in December, the appointments, recommended appointments to the CID, and that would be, I would recommend that for a council appointment, Bill Grant, and for a citizen appointment, Dennis Burnett. That'll be the recommendation I have, and if you have other recommendations, you're welcome to submit them. I also would like to announce that has an appointment to the 2050 Commission I have asked, and she has accepted, Stacey Yeung, who's here, will be participating in that commission now in the future. I believe Mr. Lee Ferris also, I still have one additional appointee to make there, since Ferris came off of that as one of my appointments, so I still have one, one other that John Fodor had stepped down off of that, so I'll still be possibly bringing one other one hopefully in December as well. Ferris, I believe, has at least one appointment that he has made to the commission.
I actually have two. I'm pleased to appoint Jeremy Sexton, I don't know if he's, he is here, and Dwight Pullen.
And Dwight, okay. I'll say this, I have attended a couple of those meetings fairly recently, and things are really shaping up on those meetings. They really are. We're getting a group there now that, I suppose, that, I suppose there was fourteen or a lady or something like that at this last meeting I went to, and out of twenty-one, you know, initially, it was running about eight or nine or something like that a long time there, and it seems like those are becoming, we're really getting a group together that is real serious about it and really interested in talking this, this through and getting some ideas, and it's amazing with some of the stuff that they're doing, and ultimately, they'll be bringing that report to us, and we'll, I think, I think we'll be pleased, hopefully.
Shouldn't Ferris have his own wife as his appointment? Didn't even have three, maybe?
I'm glad he doesn't, because I feel one of my slots.
Yeah, I can see you beat him to it.
I beat him to it, absolutely. Would like to, I'd like to mention something that Mary Akers, the director of the Arts Center, mentioned is the Art Ramble that's coming up, December the 6th and 7th, that's a Saturday and a Sunday. I think there may be some brochures downstairs in one of the racks around town, you'll see the posters and so forth, but that event has really kind of caught on, to be honest with you now. All of the artists that are involved, and it is artists from somewhere South Atlanta, I guess, all the way to Blue Ridge, L.J., and that area where someone can actually just, you could go over to the Arts Council and look at samples of what the different artists, pottery, paintings, whatever, have, have samples of their art on display there, and there's a number, which is the stop number for, by each one of them. And if you, you could go to every one of them, or you could say, I'd like to see this one, this one, and this one, and then you can get in your automobile and you can, on the 6th and 7th, you can drive to each of the studios of these artists and actually see what they, what they do in their studio, what they have available there. It's a great time for Christmas presents, you know, it really is. But I was surprised the first year that it was on, I really would have thought, this is not going to work, that's not a really good concept. But it rained one day at our house where Ellie has her studio, we had a hundred and fifty people come through that day. That, I mean, I'm sorry, those two days, and one of the days was almost a washout. So, I mean, last year was very similar numbers, and we had rain last year. I hope we don't have rain this year, but it's really, really quite interesting and quite a good thing, and it is a good concept, so I hope you'll take the time to look into it, and hopefully you can visit a number of these, and all of those sites where the studios are, and it's really a good thing.
Is the reason we had a hundred and fifty, that free Woodford Reserve was available? Is that?
No, there, that is off limits. We did have cider and some light hors d'oeuvres and snacks and stuff like that, some hot chocolate.
I heard you had patio serving, though.
No, I was driving a golf cart.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's a different subject, may I?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. I would like to ask for a report prepared or information prepared at our next work session on the disposition of the chambers.
Okay.
Our million-dollar luxury chambers.
Okay. Next work session, you can do that, can't you?
I can, I would prefer, because of the timing, to hold that to January. I don't want to go into discussion.
I think that'll be discussed later. Later.
No, it won't, no.
No, it won't. No, it's right, okay.
You're aware, if that'd be all right, we postpone it till January.
January work session?
Yes.
If there's nothing else, I'm going to hand a motion to the executive session to discuss the, I guess, have a motion in a second. I'm in favor of that. We're not going to be back out until.